All right, good evening, everyone. The time is now six P M and we are ready for our regular board meeting for November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Madam Secretary, can we please get a, oh, actually, I have a note here. Members of the public who desire to address the board on any topic related to board work must sign the roster before six thirty P M. And Madam Secretary, a roll call, please.
Regina English?
Here.
Linda Pew, here. Steve Seibert?
Here.
Corey Williams?
Here.
Naisha Ali?
She's absent this evening.
Elijah Moses?
Here.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. All right, item two point three, pledge of allegiance by Mrs. Mitchell's first grade class? Oh, it is a video, okay. And following that, we have the reading of the mission statement from Mrs. Everingham's cla- fifth grade class?
The Harrison School District Board of Education Mission is to graduate college and career-ready students with the knowledge, skills, attitudes, and behaviors to personally succeed and contribute to the common good.
Very nice, very nice. They're all sitting so attentively. All right, item number three, adopt the agenda. G C two point one, the board will function as a single unit. Item three point one, I would just need a motion.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Pew, second by Mrs. English. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, we have a meeting. All right, item number four, showcasing schools. R one, academic performance, students will achieve at least one year's academic gain each year with students performing below expectation, progressing at a greater rate. R two, students will develop the skills necessary to lead healthy, satisfying, and productive lives. Item four point one, Sand Creek International School, Mr. Charlie Ryder, Principal, Ms. Tammy Holland, and Mr. Doug Lockey, the A P. How are you guys today? Oh, we're good, we're good. We're doing well, thank you. The floor is yours.
Click to our first slide, please. I thought it might be a good way to start tonight by looking back and reflecting about the last time we were up here. Um, or two, after this, I think, sorry. There we go. So I think it was three years ago now that Sand Creek last presented to the board, and that would have been my first year in Harrison School District, actually, when I was an assistant principal at Sand Creek. And so it just was a great moment for me to reflect and think, wow, a lot has changed in a few short years. In so many ways, I think any school who would present about, you know, what's happened over the past three years would say that a lot has changed, but I think we especially can say that for a few reasons. It actually made me think about this moment that I look back on sometimes, and I'm like, wow, that was the beginning of a huge journey. It was maybe a couple of weeks into my time as the assistant principal when Rachel was principal. And with a really conspiratorial voice, she said to me, so this isn't for sure yet, but we might become a K eight school. And my mind was blown because I was not on my radar when I applied to work at Sand Creek International Elementary School. But very exciting because I had, in my past, worked as a teacher in elementary and middle school settings, and so sounded like a fun adventure I wanted to join. And so last time we had presented to you, we had recently become a newly minted P Y P school, which stands for Primary Years Program, which is kind of the elementary sub-branch of international baccalaureate. And so that was very exciting and new for us. And it's crazy that now, this year, we are doing what's called a self-study year. So after you've been in I B school for a number of years, you go through these cycles of self-study where you just kind of look at the I B standards and make sure that you're still fulfilling the I B mission and that the educational program that you're offering still matches what, up with what I B expects. So again, it's a great point for reflection and just looking at all we've done with our P Y P program. But thinking about where we were then versus where we are now, if you want to click to the next slide, oh, I guess I can click to the next slide. So now, we have not only added an entire middle school, we now are also an M Y P program, which stands for Middle Years Program. And so that's the middle school, and actually even it goes up as high as into the sophomore year of high school for the I B program. And we have officially been a middle years program since May, and just want to acknowledge that that's a huge accomplishment because we were a candidate school for what is actually a very brief amount of time. It was about year and a half, almost two years that we were in that candidate school phase, and oftentimes, schools take a lot longer than that, but we were able to accomplish it not only in that short amount of time, but then also with COVID. You know, we didn't fully have most of our students back until March of the school year. And so knowing that we had our authorization visit in May, it is just really incredible and a huge testament to our staff that they were able to accomplish the M Y P certification in all school years, last school year. It's just, every time I think about it, I'm like, I cannot believe that we pulled it off, but we did. And not only did we pull it off, we did so, you know, with really flying colors, I would say. We did not get a lot of constructive feedback. It was mostly just like, you're doing a great job with all these things, and here's a little tip. So huge shout out to our M Y P coordinator, April Pratt, you'll see her in a video a little bit later, and Tammy Holland, who had experience doing M Y P at Harrison a few years prior, so we had some really expert hands who were guiding the way for us. So very fortunate that they're members of the Harrison team generally because it's not an easy job, but they did it very well. And so not only have we added M Y P, but physically, we've added a whole new part of our building, which you can see in the top picture over there. That's our new middle school wing, so that used to just be an open field and space for kids to run and play, and now, well, they still run and play on the inside because that's the gym. You'll see some of that later, too. But we added lots of new classrooms, a big, beautiful gym. It's just a gorgeous space if you haven't seen it, and that's just been so exciting. Kids, you can tell, just take a lot of pride because it is, it just looks like you're walking on a college campus or something when you're in that wing. It's really gorgeous. And we've also, of course, had to expand our staff because as we add students every year, we have had to add teachers, too. So I calculated, it's roughly about fifteen new staff members that we've added over the past three years because the way we did it was incremental, so we added sixth grade for one year, and then the next year we added seventh. And so this year is very exciting because we have added eighth grade, and so this is truly our first year being a full K eight school, which has been wonderful, kind of finally having the whole family together.
Right.
And so adding those fifteen new staff members along with students has been wonderful because a lot of those staff members are from all over the place. We just hired a new English teacher this year who has taught in South Korea, and she's also taught in Germany, and she's taught in Saudi Arabia. And so by virtue of being an international baccalaureate school, it does kind of attract a certain type of candidate who has that kind of international experience, which is wonderful because they're bringing in all sorts of new perspectives for our students, and it's just a really great way to broaden everyone's horizons. And just a quick picture down there to kind of show, not only did we add the middle school, but the elementary school itself is also very different because the bond also provided the opportunity to get new furniture, to get new paint, and we kind of reinvented our library space to become a learning commons, which you've probably seen in a lot of presentations recently. So we have a maker space in there and some giant whiteboard walls that have been a lot of fun, not only for kids, but for staff, too. And in the midst of all this, one thing I just want to shout out is that it's really exciting to see, you know, in the midst of COVID where enrollment has been a challenge across the city, really, not just the district. Um, we've seen actually some exciting things at Sand Creek. For example, our kindergarten class, which we were projecting to not be super enormous, has actually been well over our projected numbers, which has maybe made life a little stressful at times for our kinder teachers, but it's exciting because it shows that there really is still great interest in our programming and what we can offer as a school. So it's been a nice surprise because we weren't expecting it, but we have these big, healthy kindergarten classes. All right, oh, yeah, that's my job. And so just to give a little more information on I B, I know I kind of referenced a little bit of it in the past few slides. But the I B mission is to help create and cultivate students who will become citizens, who embody certain characteristics. Namely, I would say the most important ones are that we are creating students who are inquirers. They're curious about the world around them, they're curious about other people, they're curious about everything, really, and they have a global perspective. So even when you're learning about local issues, we try to embed it within the global context. And so it's a very conceptual approach to learning. It's not the type of education that is you have to learn this piece of knowledge and this piece of knowledge. It is really more about you have to figure out how to be a learner and an inquirer, and then you kind of determine what knowledge you want to learn, and it's more about building those skills that help students become independent in their learning as opposed to just kind of filling the bucket with knowledge. So that's kind of what sets it apart from a traditional schooling approach. And so some of the key components that I just wanted to kind of shout out and illustrate here, it's very hands-on in terms of, we want students to be doing things and learning through experience. And so on that bottom picture, you can see, that's a fifth grade class who was learning about the human body. And so the teachers, as part of that, reached out to a local group of doctors who have this program where they actually bring in, I'm not even quite sure how to describe it, but they kind of create this scenario where the students get to be like surgeons themselves. And so they, on the table there, they have the setup where they can actually like cut into a fake leg and then perform a little bit of surgery and see actually what a doctor does, which was a great link to human body systems that they were learning about. And obviously, it's also a great springboard for asking questions, which is a huge part of I B. It's not just about the teacher asking the student questions, and an ideal I B classroom is the students who are really generating the questions that you then use to further the study that you're doing in the classroom. And another big part of I B and the international component is that every student receives second language instruction, and so it's pretty special that we not only have one Spanish teacher, but we have two Spanish teachers at our school. And every single student in the school, from kindergarten through eighth grade, receives second language instruction. Oh, and then one other thing, there is a huge emphasis on taking action, which I, that's probably personally one of my favorite things about it. So I was covering a second grade lunch duty, the other, or recess duty, and these kids decided to spend their time, instead of playing, cleaning up the playground because they noticed that some people were leaving their masks out. So that's how they decided to spend their time. And so to me, it might seem simple, but to me, that's really powerful to see second graders who choose to spend their time in that way, and I think it kind of captures the spirit not only of an I B school, but of what it is to be a Sand Creek Yeti. And I guess that is one thing I forgot to mention when I was talking about how we've changed since we last presented to the board. We're the Yetis now. We used to be the stars. But we had students kind of generate a list of potential mascots that they like, and after a couple of months in rounds of voting, they settled on the Yeti, and it's been actually a really great culture builder because it is kind of quirky and fun and different, and people just love it. So that's been kind of exciting as we added the middle school to just sort of reinvent, who are we? And we decided we're the Yetis. So looking at where we're headed as a school and some of our initiatives, I wanted to focus tonight mainly presenting on our three key actions. And so every school in the district has priorities that they set, and we call them our key actions. And so ours were determined in a similar way, I'd say, to what a lot of schools are going through right now. I didn't want to knock you over the head with a ton of data because our data is honestly pretty similar to what most schools are seeing, which is there are a lot of academic needs that we need to work to fill, both in reading and in math. And actually, we're seeing a probably bigger impact in math comparatively between the two subjects. And just a kind of glimpse of how we determine that, we not only use some nationally normed tests like Acadians, which is often called DIBELS, which is a reading assessment. Uh, we also use I Ready, like every other school in the district, but then I put up a couple screenshots of some kind of local measures that we use uh, for both. So these are our data trackers, and we use them actually in multiple subjects. So on the left there, you can see is a math tracker, which kind of helps us determine what areas in math students need instruction in, so we hold data teams where teachers look at student work and determine next steps based on that. Same for writing, so underneath there, where it says narrative, September, we give monthly writing P C Rs, which is essentially like a writing prompt that we use a rubric on to assess students and determine as a class, what do they need to focus on, but then also for individual students, what does that child specifically need? So that's kind of what we're looking at to guide some of the work that we're doing. And I would say some of the most important work that we've started last year and are continuing into this school year is around the science of reading. So there was a core group of us, some of the literacy coaches, Tammy, myself, who really did a pretty deep dive into a lot of the literature on the science of reading last year. And so you'll see that visual there called Scarborough's Reading Rope. This is kind of a great visual for just illustrating what are the main takeaways of how you teach reading. And there really are two huge components. There is the decoding piece, or what they call word recognition over there, which is all the things you might picture in like a kinder or first grade classroom of teaching phonics and letter sounds and basic spelling and decoding. And how that actually, unlike what I was saying earlier, is truly a stair-step process of you have to learn these sounds. You need to do it sequentially. You need to make sure kids don't have any gaps in what they're learning when it comes to phonics. But then the other side of it is language comprehension, which is really about building content knowledge and background knowledge about the world, so making sure that, you know, if a student has a text in front of them, if they don't know what it's about, as in like, let's say, it's a sport. Um, I don't know, this will be an easy example, it's baseball, but if you're a kid from another country and you don't have baseball in your country, it's going to be really challenging for you to understand that text. And so we just try to provide a wide range of background building experiences, which is why I B kind of complements this nicely because there is a ton of science and social studies content embedded into I B curriculum, as you saw with the human body example we did a few slides ago. And so just thinking about how we could tighten up some of our programming when it comes to reading and reading intervention, we adopted a K through three foundational skills curriculum called Foundations, which is really targeted phonics, spelling, decoding, fluency instruction, and it makes sure that we're completely aligned kindergarten through third grade. Um, whereas previously, we had had some really great instruction going on at some of those grades, but we just kind of realized over time that we could use even more vertical alignment, and so Foundations has been our Read Act-approved way of doing that. And in addition to that, we also have taken a look at our intervention practices. Um, and intervention, of course, is the time of day where each grade level breaks into small groups for targeted instruction based on student needs. So instead of just like the three second grade teachers they're teaching, but then also so is the special education teacher, so is the C L D E teacher, so are the instructional pairs. So you can make much smaller instructional groups and target students' needs a lot better. And so we revamped some of that through a process called Plan, Do, Study, Act, where you plan for student needs, you then do a cycle of instruction based on those student needs, you study the results, and then you act upon them. So you either continue what you're doing because it's working, or maybe you have to reshuffle some groups or change an intervention that you're doing. And so within that cycle, we also have made sure that every single intervention that's happening during that time is a research-based sequential curriculum. Um, so there is no doubt about students getting exactly what they need according to the data. All right, and for key action number two, I'm going to kick it over to Mr. Lockey.
All right. Hello, I'll be super brief. Uh, this is math. Uh, at Sand Creek, we are delivering the pre-module assessments, and teachers are using the data from that to plan their unit planners. Um, we are using I Ready with fidelity and also focusing on small group math instruction, high-quality small group math, math instruction. Um, and we also are beginning this year to do monthly C Rs in math, which we have not done before. Um, and teachers are collaborating in, uh, to score those, and we're already seeing gaps that we need, identifying gaps in those C Rs to get us ready and our kids ready for, for C math, so that's math.
Um, I'm key action number three, which has been our focus on social emotional learning for our kiddos. We have lots of great things happening here in the elementary. We have a dedicated morning meeting time for all kids, every classroom, and, um, the teachers have expressed how nice it is to really have that time each morning. Uh, in the middle school, we have incorporated our S E L professionals, our counselors, our sites, our social workers. They actually come into every middle school classroom on Monday and do a presentation on a topic for the kids in the middle school. Last week was considering different perspectives when you're within a conflict. So they come in, they plan the lesson, and they co-teach that with the teacher in the room so that the teacher feels supported as well by having a mental health professional with them presenting. And then as the week continues, that middle school teacher then in, um, embeds that same topic into their lessons throughout the week. So it's not just a Monday thing, it's an everyday thing for our kids. And we've seen a lot more of our kids using that language because they're exposed to it a lot more. We also, this year, for the first time, have a student leadership class within the day. Right now, it's sixth graders. Next semester, it'll expand to seventh graders. And they have started what we call Peace Peeps, and so they are restorative justice leaders in the building. Um, their most recent student action out of that group is that they felt like sometimes kids are too shy to come ask for help. So they've put out just papers in the hallway with little boxes that kids can write, hey, I'd like to talk to somebody, or this is what's going on. And they can just leave it there, and our counselors check it a couple of times a day and check in with those students. Um, at our elementary level, we have redone our P B I S to be Yeti Pride so that we are all matching with that. We have an I B buck store that they use their classroom dojo for points. They come in, they earn prizes. Like, uh, today, I had game time with a bunch of second graders. Tomorrow, we have a third grader being principal for an hour, so they get to do some really fun things. Um, last year, you know, we had one actually created- Last year, you know, we had one, actually created a checklist for our custodian and he went out and inspected the playground and gave us some great feedback. So they take that job very seriously. Yeah, it's really cute. And we, you know, have really been focusing a lot on alternative discipline, really looking at what is the root of behavior? And how can we work to fix that? And we've been involving our families a lot with that. So we have reverse suspensions where families come in and sit with the kids and see what's going on during the day and help support. And then we end those days with talking as a team, what can we do differently or better for kids to help them within the school day? And we now actually have a lot of parents who we don't even have to ask, they'll just bring that up as an idea right away and we are right on board with that. So we've seen a lot of growth with our kids. And the last thing is, we have this peace path that our kids have actually learned how to walk through that. Even with kindergartners, it's really cute in the middle of a kindergarten lesson to see them say, I didn't like it when you, I didn't like it when you did this. And they'll be like, this is how it made me feel. Next time I will. And they make promises to each other and then they shake hands or bump fists and they move it on their way. And sometimes they come back for a little hug in the middle of a lesson. So really cute. But that starts from kindergarten all the way through eighth grade. We also started a new program called Renaissance. The goal of Renaissance is that every student and every staff member feels seen and heard every day. We took a team to a conference last week and we were actually interviewed as a strong implementation school for Justin's Renaissance. And so we have these Renaissance cards that you'll see along the side, blue, bronze, silver, and gold. We've built a school rubric where kids earn points for doing things. And it includes attendance, grades, service actions that they take, behavior, missing work. And there's lots of entry points because it's a cumulative total. So maybe you don't have great grades, but you have perfect attendance, so you still can earn one of these cards. We had almost 60% of our middle schoolers earn one of these Renaissance cards in our very first assembly, which is incredible. The first time you run an assembly, you're not sure whether or not the kids will buy in. But all day long it was, what color, what color? Because we don't tell them till they get there. So we had over 60% earn them. And what that does is throughout the next quarter, they earn special rewards. So yesterday was a gold and silver pizza party. They bring their cards, staff members come, we celebrate and just have that time with kids. Other kids walk by, oh, can I have pizza? Great, earn a card. And then, you know, they're working hard to do that as well. We also started, when we went to our conference, they focused on how to expand Renaissance to staff members as well, so that we're recognizing students and staff. So last night was our first time we did these little Yeti sightings. And what that is, it's a little certificate we give them to the kids. So last night at the basketball game, we had a bunch of our cheerleaders sitting in the stands. Staff didn't know about these. Every time they saw a staff member walk in, that staff member got caught and they thanked that staff member for coming to an after-school activity. This morning, we announced all of those staff members, we put candy on it. And then our basketball team walked around and thanked every teacher that came to that event. And so now that's kind of a contest with staff fun, who can earn the most Yeti sightings? So really working on how to build that culture within our whole school. These are some pictures from our very first Renaissance assembly and we have a very cool video to share with you. If you want to click down there in the corner. No problem. So our gold card members, whoever wins the gold card game, their prize is that they get to give staff members a pie in the face.
Nice.
And our kids vote on who gets a pie in the face. The kids don't know which staff members it's going to be. We do give the adults some warning so they can prepare. But the kids find out at the assembly who gets the pie in the face. So this is them pieing us for the first time. That's me in the white shirt, first time ever I've been pieing faces.
He really leaned into it.
This actually has been great because now our kids almost use this as a way of correcting teachers. And they'll walk by and they'll be like, pull your mask up or I'm voting for you. So this pie thing has been kind of a joke around our school now with our kids as well. And the other thing we wanted to share around our culture is athletics. This has really grown at our school. When we brought in the seventh grade, we had a survey of kids of what they were interested in. And at that point, we thought we would have a soccer team and a basketball team. And I was like, wow, now we have soccer, bat for girls and boys, softball. Oh my goodness, both basketball teams, football. We almost have enough for our own wrestling team. We had 30 kids yesterday. Yeah, we had, actually had to borrow a mat from Harrison to bring over to our school because we had so many kids. We've started our own, if you want any Yeti gear, our activity store. You can actually build anything you want on the front and the back of your shirts. So kids have all kinds of really cool stuff walking around. And it's just been great to have this team spirit and have community again. And just to see our families and our kids back involved in sports. And then we would just love you to hear from the Yetis, how they feel about school.
San Creek is a special place because there's a lot of nice teachers here and there's a lot of special people here. And San Creek is like a home to me and it's one of my favorites. And let's go check it out.
My name is Ms. Stutz and I teach Global Studies at San Creek International School. And Global Studies is a class that builds children's knowledge of the world around them. It gives them geographical knowledge, like we are located in the state of Colorado, which is in the country of the United States. It's in the continent of North America. It goes to a broad spectrum so that they can know where they're located. And then additionally, it teaches them about different cultures around the world so that they can be open-minded, get to know about other cultures and feel the respect for those cultures. And this is important for students, especially because we're an IB school. It helps to connect them, just help them understand other cultures and other places. Instead of being like, why are they like that? They understand why and then they have respect for them. And I always tell them, we're learning about different cultures, but that doesn't mean that you have to change what you're doing. It just means that you are learning about them so that you can respect them and have a greater understanding of why they do that and their place in the world versus your place in the world.
Hi, my name is Brian McRoberts. I'm one of the counselors at San Creek International School. One of the things that we do at San Creek that we find to be very important and we've found tremendous success with is our restorative practices. Restorative practices, who else means trying to strengthen relationships between individuals? And even a broader sense of responsibility to our school community.
Hi, my name is Diana Smith. I'm one of two counselors here at San Creek International School. And this year, in order to support our students with social emotional learning, myself and my co-counselor Brian McRoberts and I are co-teaching a class on leadership skills. We're currently working with our sixth grade students to help teach them how to become effective leaders and help problems solve. And so that they can take these skills out to the community and learn behind.
Hi, I'm April Pratt, the middle years program coordinator here at San Creek International School. I'm excited to share with you that we became authorized as an IB NYPD school last year. Now that we've gone through the authorization process, our next focus for this year is all about really developing our students into internationally-minded kids who are able to take action in their communities and in their school. Part of the way we're doing that is doing the community project and all of our eighth graders will be participating in and presenting at the end of the year. And then our sixth and seventh grade students are also doing some mini-passion slash action projects to demonstrate their ability to contribute back to the school as well.
The purpose of athletics at San Creek International is to provide students with a challenging environment that aids in academic, social, emotional, and physical development. While participating in athletics at San Creek International, our student athletes, they learn valuable life lessons that help build on the IB curriculum in the classroom, as well as build meaningful relationships within the school and community. San Creek International prides itself on providing not only some of the most talented teachers, but some of the most talented coaches as well. Our entire coaching staff are all teachers within the school who are able to consistently hold their student athletes to a high standard. San Creek International is happy to offer football, volleyball, boys and girls cross-country, boys and girls basketball, boys and girls wrestling, boys and girls soccer, boys and girls track and field, and softball to all of our enrolled students.
So that's a little glimpse into San Creek tonight. Thank you for your time. We certainly enjoyed getting to share a little bit about the work that we're doing. And if you have any questions, we'd love to answer them, but otherwise, like I said, thank you for everything.
All right. You guys are doing an amazing job. Yeah, clap it up for them. Yeah, please. So I noticed when the video started, it said, uh, Yetis can move mountains. That's, that's, that's powerful words right there. I, I love the fact that you are creating these lifelong learners and they're taking ownership of their school. And that, that touched my heart when you had the kids, well, the kids had themselves picking up trash during the recess. Like that, that's a, that's a beautiful thing, beautiful thing from your, your IB NYPD validation. A shout out to Ms. Pratt. I saw her in the, in the video there. I haven't been to you guys' school since I got on the board. COVID took some time out of there. You only had, uh, sixth graders then. I'm gonna have to, have to pop up on you guys then. You know, I, I will sign up for a pie. Yeah, I will volunteer for a pie. You, you heard it here. I saw the children playing soccer in the gym. Do you guys do indoor soccer or outdoor soccer?
So outdoor, but we-
You practice inside?
Incredible athletic director.
Nice.
All sorts of like preparatory camps. And so even over the summer, he, every single day was running things where kids could come in, even just for like calisthenics and just getting to be in better shape and preparing for seasons before they actually happen. So we haven't started soccer season yet, but already, just because of the dedication of our athletics faculty, we already are offering those camps where the kids can take part and be even more ready when the season does arrive.
Very nice, very nice. And your, your restorative practices, that Peace Peeps is an amazing program. That's, that's, that's a beautiful thing. The children at that young age, learning to, to get along and work out their differences. We got a lot of adults, we gotta work on that too. But we, we could take a page or two out of their book. They're, they're doing phenomenal. So Principal Ryder, AP Holland, and Larky, you guys are doing an amazing job. Keep up the good work. We really, we truly appreciate it.
Well, thank you. We appreciate hearing that. So thank you so much and have a great night.
If anybody has anything to add?
I do. Just real quick, first, thank you all for coming to present. You guys are doing a phenomenal job. Can we go to slide three? Yay! I just wanted to go back to slide three because who's responsible for having those young ladies so poised? That is like right up my alley. That slide made my heart so happy. I was like, let's go back to slide number three.
Well, it's funny you say that because we had two takes and in the other take, they were just sitting, you know, like this. But then they had the idea, I don't know which one did.
Okay.
And when they showed me, I was like, oh, this one.
Yeah, I need to come back to, come back to your school to visit with these students. But a few things that stood out for me was your ver- reverse suspension, how you have the families involved. That, that is, that is phenomenal because we all know that sometimes, you know, some of our, their behavioral issues can stem from things that are happening at home. So we just have to get to the foundation. So that's awesome. And also, principal for an hour. Yes. You know what? That is going to be a life-changing experience for he or she, whomever it may be. And, and that's just leadership and that's going to have a huge impact on that student's life. And the Yeti sighting. Yes. Can I be a Yeti? So I can get some Yeti sightings? Yeah, absolutely. So just, just build your, the culture that you're building over there at San Creek International is phenomenal. So kudos to you and your whole entire staff and thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you. We really appreciate that.
I believe Ms. Moya has something for you.
Yeah. So just from the student perspective, this made me so happy. It was just so like heartfelt and heart, like, you know, I fell in love with playing sports when I was in middle school and I had those camps and stuff. So seeing that you're, you know, you said you start, you thought you were only going to have two teams, but just seeing how like the culture came together and you supported that. And I know for a fact that those kids are going to remember that. You know, going into high school, they're going to remember, oh, I pied this teacher in the face, you know? Just like those little moments, like those like core memories that you're building now that they're definitely going to use in high school. They're definitely going to remember on like in their life. That just made me really happy. So.
Well, thank you. We'll share that with our athletic team.
I'd like to share that, um, Mr. Ryder might have subdued how amazing it was to get certified in the middle school years program. They did it in probably a third of the time most schools do it and most, some schools never get it. And so they really pushed through and again, during a pandemic, who would have thought? Like they had to change the whole process. They had to do virtual visits. They had to do some in-school visits. So kudos to them for moving through that process to give our kids these opportunities. And then we did have to clarify what the plural of Yeti is because when we found out that was the mascot, we're like, is it Yeti? So they've clarified and it's Yetis. And so-
Although I think we read that you can actually choose.
There's multiple versions, yes.
Yeti could be the plural or Yetis. So we go with Yetis. Nice and simple.
Very nice. Well, again, we appreciate everything that you're doing for the children and the community. The impact that you're having on those children's lives is amazing. We, we truly thank you. Thank you.
Well, thank you all. We appreciate it.
Item four point two, the Harrison High School band under the leadership of Mr. Keith Basalian, placed fourth in the state competition. And we have a video clip of them today. The band's student leaders are here with us tonight. Marquise McClenn, Cassandra Erkoff, Kaylee Shote, Tiana Hayes, Isaiah Lewis, Sydney Tony, and Elizabeth Harrison.
Hi, I'm Keith Basalian. We have a few of those students here. We also have Taylor, who's in the lead as well.
All right.
So we, we compete in the three A division. Every team card is based on the school size, like the band size. So we are by far the smallest band to compete.
All right.
And we had 29 numbers total on the field. And so to be competing with bands that had upwards of 90 or 100 on the field at the same time is, is pretty remarkable. And we wouldn't have been able to do it without the support we received from, especially Dr. Burghansel. She's made the hearts a huge priority for years. I know Ms. Pugh has had multiple students come through our program and she's been huge performance of what we've done for years. And we also have an amazing staff who are all here tonight. Who can stand up? We have Ms. Johnson, who teaches at Panorama Middle School.
Very nice. You're good. Yeah.
Mr. Mulligan teaches at Fox Meadow Middle School.
All right.
Mr. Martinez is our poetry coach and he teaches in District Eight. We're trying to lure him this way though.
Hey, what you doing over there? Come on!
And then Mr. Lyman, the director of Sierra High School, also does all of our percussion.
Very nice.
He's at home with his kids. He gave enough time to us away from his family during the fall.
Completely understandable.
They've done a phenomenal job. We had, out of those 29 kids, six of the students participating with us. We were seventh and eighth graders that were marching to high school level. And contributing, I mean, you'll see, you can't pick out those, those seventh and eighth graders from everybody else from the seniors. So it was really proud of what we did. This was at Carlsberg University, Pueblo, on November 1st. Next year, we'll be at Grand Junction on Halloween. We already started a planning, show planning process today, actually, for next year.
All right.
It's a full year-long commitment, what we do, but just want to say thank you for supporting us. We were fifth going into finals and our band jumped four points from semifinals to finals, which doesn't sound a lot if you're, you know, doing basketball, but think of it as scoring points in soccer.
That's a lot, yeah.
We, we jumped in front from fifth to fourth, going from semifinals to finals. And the students really just performed their hearts out. It was really fun. So I hope you enjoy the show. We did a Day of the Dead theme. We thought it would resonate really well with our community, given our demographics at Harrison High School. And it encompasses a lot of the feelings that people have with the feelings of loss, you know, whether that's actually family loss. you know, whether that's actually family loss, or what they lost through those COVID years, um, in terms of engagement activities. Uh, and we just wanted to reflect that in a, a less direct way of saying, you know, we are family. Uh, and so we, we chose to go this route with it. I hope you enjoy it.
Very nice. Thank you.
Harrison High School, Colorado, under the direction of Keith Basalian, welcome to Harrison Panther, the team band! Harrison Band, an engaged, united band. Stand on a dance number three, and remember me. The Colorado Band Association Association presents the Littany Club, St. Louis, California, Kentucky, North Carolina, South Carolina, and the Harrison Panthers, the team band!
Very nice. Now, I played the trumpet in high school, but I was never that good. Um, that, uh, that first-chair trumpet, who brought in the, uh, the, uh, second piece, that kid is amazing. What? Stand, stand up. Yeah, you, you are fantastic. You are fantastic. Oh, man, I, I was excited for, for, for that. Um, that fanfare, uh, that, that third piece, that fanfare was amazing. Um, and the, and the transition for the Day of the Dead, uh, in the, at the end of the, uh, second piece, uh, to close that out was very beautiful. Very, you guys did a remarkable job. Very nice. Uh, y'all have anything to add?
Our kids are the best ever. Harrison School District 2 and our students. Congratulations. Phenomenal job.
I would just add that Harrison's known the district, not just Harrison High School, for Harrison's marching band. And it is exciting to see the tradition continue. Um, thank you, staff members. I know this is relentless hours of your dreaming up what this could be. I don't even know how you get to this point, but wow! Um, and really, the belief in our kids. I mean, when you're only got, I think you said, 29 out there competing against a band of 100, but you make our students believe they can, thank you, because they can. And you showed that. Um, Mr. Basalian also has a special announcement about what they've been accepted to perform in December.
We'll be performing for a judgment at the Department of the Association's School Conference.
Very nice. Yes.
We'll see you there, then. Yeah.
Unfortunately, I wasn't able to, to come and, and see the, the competition, but I kept, I got to hear all the updates as it went along. And to, to know how such a small group can outshine such larger groups is just commendable. I mean, you, you need to pat everyone on the back 10 times for, for all that wonderful success. It's great stuff.
And if the young lady would please stand again in that, that first chair? No, I know, uh, I know you're, you're pretty young right now. Um, and I know we have the Dakota promise for when you graduate high school. But there are millions of schools that give music scholarships. And I'm, I, I happen to be wearing my alma mater today, Savannah State University. We, we need you in the big bands. We, we need you in the big bands, and show-style marching. All right?
We have it for one more year.
One more year. One more year. Well, it'll be the best one yet, I'm sure.
Are there any more students from the band?
Oh, yeah, we have, we have a couple, yeah. All of you.
Everybody from the band, stand up. Please. Yes!
It's from the-
Congratulations.
Color guard. Yep, uh-huh, yeah. And what instrument do you play, young lady? Vanilla foam. All right. Uh-huh, yeah. That's fine, yeah. All those, uh, those runs, your runs are great. Uh-huh, yeah, I know. I know the work, the hard work you put in. It showed. It showed. Four-point jump. That's, that's, that's a big jump. Put it on your back. She's on the, uh, color guard, color guard. The, the ladies in the purple. Yeah. Y'all were doing amazing, amazing. Congratulations to y'all.
Thank you all.
Can we take a picture with the ones that are here on the board?
Of course. Yes, let's do that. We got time.
One, one of those is my granddaughter, by the way.
Oh!
Mr. Basalian, and, um, all of you, can you come take a picture with the board?
Just really quick. I mean, I play a lot of sports, but I don't know how you guys have the lung capacity for that. So just kudos to that, 'cause- Yeah, I, I could never. I'm in the picture? Oh.
That's the benefit of a small group, we all do.
It all fits. Okay, so you have to, what is, what, what do you say in the band before you march on the field?
Play that?
Go Panthers. One, two, three.
Go Panthers!
All right, moving right along to item 4.3, R1 academic achievement. Uh, Mr. Andy Bristle? All right, we're gonna have to talk to Andy.
So, similar to last month, this is just follow-up from the detailed presentation you received two weeks ago at the work session, this time focused on math. So just checking in to see if you had any follow-up questions or clarifications for us.
No, uh, but we did have some, um, some conversation in the back, though. We've really, we've needed to strive for this piece for quite some time. And the fact that we're finally starting to see some of that come to fruition is amazing. And so, uh, we're really gonna write this piece going forward, uh, because it's, it's been lacking. Uh, just seeing the achievement, not that we haven't been achieving, but producing the achievement for the public, so that they can see what we're doing in the school. So, thank you. Thank you for the hard work that you're doing. I would give it to Andy, but-
I promise I will pass it along. He asked if we wanted, he emailed Dr. Berhansel and myself, saying, do you want me to be there? And I said, no, I'd really like for you to take an evening and do no work at all. So I hope that's what he's doing.
Very nice, very nice. Uh, well, rest, uh, well deserved. Yes.
Since most, many people might not have been at the work session, any couple things you can highlight from what you did present at the work session for us?
Um, the overall summary, Mr. Ryder actually alluded to earlier, that with the impact from the pandemic, we did see more significant, um, gaps in math than we did in reading. And so, we predicted that last spring, and so we started to make some major changes to our math instruction this year, especially K8, with a lot more small groups. Um, assessments that would allow us to identify skills from the previous grade level students had not mastered, and provide teachers resources and tools to address those skills, both in-person small groups, and with providing online instructional licenses to all of our K8 students using some of our SRF funds. So that's kind of a high-level overview of the impacts on the math data, and then how we responded to start to make up some of that learning loss this year.
Thank you.
Anything else to add?
Maybe something that, that I really picked up on, using iReady, being able to make instant choices. Would, we get the data instantly back, and can make, uh, almost weekly adjustments in, in what we need to catch up or fill those gaps, uh, is probably for the, for the public, and, uh, a fantastic step. And, and I think that it'll, there'll be a great impact. And, of course, um, it was much more detailed in the work session, but I think that's a, I think that's a real highlight.
And we are excited to see our mid-year iReady data, both in reading and math. When we come back, we have one more full instructional week, and then we start the mid-year assessment. So, our hope is to see that everything we've been doing is starting to close the gaps of some of that learning loss that we saw.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lawford.
Thank you.
All right. All right, moving on to item number five, communicating with the public. Uh, GC 3.3, initiate and maintain two-way dialogue with students, staff, parents, and the citizens as a means to engage all stakeholders in the work of the board and the district. Uh, we do not have anyone for, uh, public comment, so we will skip item 5.1. Uh, item 5.2, uh, the appreciation of our outgoing board members. Uh, we would like to take the time to show our appreciation to Mr. Steve Seabert and Ms. Linda Pugh for everything that they have done for Harrison School District. Between the two of them, they have served 20 years on the Board of Education. Their commitment is very much appreciated. Mr. Seabert has ser- served as treasurer, president, and director, and Mrs. Pugh has served as treasurer, secretary, and vice president. We wish them well in their future. And for those of you who do not know, uh, this is their last meeting. Um, our very next meeting, uh, we will have seated our new, newly-elected, uh, board members. And so, uh, this is the last time you will see, uh, Mr. Seabert and Mrs. Pugh on the dais. So, uh, we would like to give them a round of applause, and, uh, thank you for what they've done. We do have gifts. I thought, I thought we were gonna set those up, uh, but, uh-
We'll let you.
And, and you all can, and take the time and, right? I didn't get to see this before, so I don't know if it has the approval stamp yet, but no, we're good, we're good. We get good gifts. Very nice, very nice. It's got pieces. Hold on.
Everyone, uh, uh, normal, knew my love affair with the gavel, so it's very appropriate that there is a gavel on the-
And of course, uh, for the outgoing board members, if you have any reflections that you would like to share with us, um, I know you have eight years' worth of reflections, so we don't need all eight. Maybe some, some prized experiences. You wanna go, Linda, or do you want?
Sure, I'll go.
Go ahead.
I, I don't know what particularly I want to leave with you, but I would, I would say that 16 years ago, the last thing on my mind was running for school board. I had no clue, had no interest whatsoever. I was trying to help find a candidate to run for school board, and all of a sudden, it became me. I, I, I think I was like the heel marks in the ground as they were pulling me into this. in the ground as they were pulling me into this. Um, and then I had, did my eight years, and then, uh, four years later, a couple people kinda said, "Gee, you ought to do this again." And so here I am. I've been a parent, a grandparent and community member for over 35 years in the district. Uh, you know, Harrison, it gets into you. It, it becomes part of you. And it's been a real privilege and honor to be able to serve in this capacity. You know, our kids deserve the absolute best. They're capable of the very best, and to be able to help guide the, the district in that direction, set the values to, to support that, as I said, it's been a privilege and an honor. So thank you very much.
Very nice.
Well, I had started writing something very eloquent, and I was just gonna read it, or in the case that I couldn't read it, hand it to someone else to read for me. Um, probably the, the core of it all, being in a, a Harrison High School alum.
You're good.
Sorry, Steve.
We thought some, we thought some things were left for you guys up here, but apparently I have an admirer or something.
No, um, being able to connect to the kids and say, "I was where you were once." And to be able to serve constituents in the, in the best perspective for opportunities for our children is, is, that was the crux of, of all of the, and believe me, there were stories, ups, downs, learning, uh, many, many, many things I had thought about saying, but that, it, that really cuts to the core of, um, you know, Linda said Harrison gets in you. My wife graduated from Harrison, my daughter, uh, my wife works for the district, my daughter worked for San Creek. Uh, so it, it is very much, uh, a part of, of you. That's it?
Very nice.
We are Harrison.
I would say on behalf of the staff, thank you both for keeping the kids first. Every decision was about kids, and sometimes it makes us as adults uncomfortable, but you kept the kids and the students at the forefront. So thank you, and we will continue that vision, um, with our new board that we're seating, but thank you for the endless hours and the conversations and the arguments and the, at the end of the day, we came out for what was best for students. So thank you both from, on behalf of the staff, and I do think we need another pitcher, Ms. O'Brien, with the last board pitcher before they leave us.
I, I do have to, I, I see, I see future members here. I am very optimistic that we have a fantastic board coming on. I would feel very different if I had any, any, um, uh, if I was, had, had, had any thought that it was not going to be a, a fantastic board, but I, I, I really am, am, uh, excited about the, the new board that we have. Uh, it'll, it, it will be a very good, uh, leadership for the district.
Very nice.
Thank you.
I'm ready.
I was wondering if that was on. Yes.
All right, do we have a release this side? One, two, three. Yeah, could you do it with your Harrison? Ready? One, two, three. Sorry, can I kick you two out of the photo?
Harrison. The Harrison, the Harrison. Very nice.
All right, we will move along to item number six, board consent agenda. GC 2.6, the board will use a consent agenda as a means to expedite the disposition of routine matters and dispose of other items of business it chooses not to discuss. Item number 6.1, minutes from October 7th, 6.2, minutes from October 21st, 6.3, OE4, personal administration, 6.4, OE11, indicator report, 6.5, superintendent contract, and for 6.6, I would just need a motion.
I move to approve or disapprove the board consent agenda as stated.
Move to approve?
Approve. I'm sorry, I was reading everything that's on here, y'all. My bad. So I move to approve the board consent agenda as stated.
Second?
Motion by Mrs. English, second by Mrs. Pugh. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Items approved.
Can I just interject something for a moment?
Yes, ma'am.
I had the good fortune to be on the board when my son, who just hugged me, graduated. I got through the whole graduation without crying till they walked off the field. That's all it took, you know, one hug, and now it's like, okay, now I'm, I'm sorry.
All right, moving along to item number seven, superintendent consent agenda. GC 2.6, the board will use a consent agenda as a means to expedite the disposition of routine matters and dispose of other items of business it chooses not to discuss. Item number 7.1, November Personnel and Comparison Report. Item 7.2, superint, uh, I'm sorry, September Financial Report. And for 7.3, I would just need another motion.
I move to approve the superintendent consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Seibert, second by Mrs. English. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda items approved. Moving along to item eight, monitoring board performance. GC 2.2, the board is responsible for its own performance and commits itself to continuous improvement. The board will assure that its members have the knowledge, skills, and budget support it determines to be necessary for effective governance. Our annual work plan? Do we have any changes? I don't think we did. We solidified a lot. Just giving it a once-over.
Just because it will happen before we meet again, we do have six students going to the Casby Conference, so, um, Eliza, Naija, and then two other from Harrison and two other from Sierra are going, and Mr. Longmire?
Along with the band.
And the band.
So we'll have the biggest turnout this year.
Yes, so we will be representing at Casby.
Very nice, very nice.
Lot going on at Casby this year. Good stuff.
All right, with no changes to the annual work plan, do we have any legislative updates?
Still waiting to see what the Finance Committee gives back to education. Um, it's gonna be a long haul. There's not a lot of extra money just hanging out. Um, and seeing what bills actually come to fruition. Usually there's about 60 education bills, so see which ones we want to get behind and lobby for or against and kind of what's out there. So, still in the waiting process, but January will be here soon.
Very nice, very nice. All right, moving along to item number nine to adjourn, and I would just need a motion.
With no further business, I move to adjourn the Board of Education Board Meeting.
Second.
Sounds fitting. Motion by Mr. Seibert, second by Mrs. Pugh. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.